Good evening, Chair. Calls to order public hearing for Bill 24-036, zoning code Chapter 267, roof mounted wind turbines. Councilman Bennett?
Hello, good evening. I appreciate having this opportunity to talk about my legislation. This is something my office has been looking into and considering for a little over a year now. We wanted to make sure that we fully understood more of the technology behind roof mounted wind turbines, but also what other jurisdictions, both locally and in other states, have done in regards to this technology. And it's actually been really interesting. Councilman Pennman and I were having a conversation this evening, and I was showing him how roof mounted wind turbines are used at Philadelphia Eagles Stadium for their games and powering their lighting. And in general, I just think any sort of technology we can do that helps produce renewable energy off of our ground and up in the sky is good for our community and protecting our agricultural land. And all this legislation does is enable people to do something if they so wish. Some of the reasons that I've heard from constituents about why they would like to be able to do this is it helps diminish the need for external batteries to be attached to your house if you have solar. So for nighttime energy production, you can use that wind to help power your lights versus having a battery that, you know, runs the risk of combustion attached to your home. People who like to be less grid reliant and to be able to have energy production that's independent of their local energy supplier. And then also people who are just looking for a green energy project to do with their family, something that they could work on and install and use as a family. This technology has come a long way since, I think it was 2009 when the Philadelphia Eagles installed their own. Now you can order a roof mounted wind turbine online for less than $1,000 and install it on your property. It was actually very interesting driving through Virginia this past week, seeing that through Alexandria, it's all over their building tops. So, and I know New York City a few years ago passed legislation that said by a certain date that they were going to require buildings to either install solar power or wind turbines. So it's just kind of an interesting urban industry that's growing, and it's good for us to make pathways for those interested to embrace it. So that's why I brought this legislation forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Thank you for your thoughts and comments there. I also want to thank you for your months of due diligence working with planning and zoning and former counsel attorney, Mr. Kearney, and Ms. Allegi now. So counsel at this time, Mr. Janjordana.
Thanks. Jacob, so Jacob, is there a limitation on the size of these?
Yes.
So can you explain that?
So our limitation, there's a few considerations that we put into the legislation. One of the biggest is capacity on the amount of energy that could be produced. So these are all small systems that at most are producing 2.5 kilowatt hours of energy per day. So, you know, and you know, in reference to your electric vehicles that you've driven in the past, 2.5 kilowatt hours of electricity is not a tremendous amount of energy per day, which is a safety limitation that we took from other counties in Maryland. To be specific about size, let me get to that part of our legislation because we added in some considerations to that specifically because we were thinking about line of sight for homes. You know, you don't want to disrupt the line of sight in your neighborhood.
Is there also a limit?
Eight feet.
Eight feet of what?
Above the rooftop.
Eight feet. How about the actual size of the unit? Is there a size limitation on the units? And then second, and then other question is, can somebody put more than one unit if the size is whatever, 36 inches in diameter or something? Is there a limit on how many they can install on the roof?
The limitation on number of units would be dictated by the amount of energy being produced. And then as far as limit on size of, you're talking about like the blades?
Well, the whole size of the turbine.
Yeah, so that, the top of it has to be at most eight feet above your roof line. And so along with that, the other thing, a lot of these roof mounted wind turbines don't spin in your traditional setup that you picture as a wind turbine, where it's these giant blades that go around and around like a windmill. A lot of them now oscillate in this direction, which reduces a lot of the visual impact of what you picture as a wind turbine. So, I mean, that's another piece of the technology that's just changed with time.
Okay, so it is limited by the amount of voltage that can be? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Bennett, I appreciate you sitting down with me and having a discussion about this legislation. I support new innovative ways, and I stand by property owners' rights. So if someone wants to put that on their property, who am I to say no? So I'll support your legislation, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else, Mr. Riley?
Howard Chickacook.
Yeah, the only question I have, and I got a lot of questions on this one, is signs. Why do we have signs permitted on a wind energy system?
Signs? That's just language that was already in this section of the code. The only parts that are relevant to the wind turbines is on page six.
Right, so if I got a wind turbine and I put a, what is it, six foot, I think it was on here? Yeah, no larger than six square feet. So if I'm a resident and I want to put a six foot, square foot, a fixed sign on there to advertise wind solar, I can do that according to this legislation.
The portion of the code that you're referencing, what page number are you on?
Page three, number six.
So that portion of the language is attached to the more traditional wind turbines, you know, large scale wind turbines. So the only portion of the legislation relevant to personal use wind turbines and the requirements on those are on page six. So we added page six, which focuses on...
I understand you added page six, but once you add it to this legislation, I could put a sign on my roof at least six square feet affixed to my roof advertising the equipment.
No, if you look at the existing language in the code, small wind energy systems, only certain sections of that part of the existing code apply to small wind energy systems. So if you look at subsection H on page five, it tells you which sections of the code apply to the smaller systems. And it's very few sections because a lot of this stuff is not applicable to the smaller systems.
So you're saying if I look at page five?
H.
HI.
Right, H. Where C9, A, B, B2, and B3 are the ones that apply to the small systems. The rest of the sections that are currently in the code do not apply to those systems.
Okay.
You would not be able to have a sign and a lot of those other things involving the Public Service Commission, none of that applies to these smaller systems.
Thanks.
Thank you. You explained that well.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else?
I just wanted to share a few of the other considerations because we wanted to be mindful of that balance of you wanting to do something on your own personal property, but also not wanting to negatively impact those around you. So for instance, these need to be installed on single-family detached dwellings. The reason for that is, you know, you don't want to impact those that you share your roof with in one way or another. You know, if you live in a duplex like I do, or you live in a quadplex, or you live in a condominium building, you know, you don't want what you're doing on the roof to impact those that you share that roof with. We also want to make sure that the wind turbine is neutral in its color for skyline use, that people aren't installing hot pink wind turbines on their roof in your neighborhood, which again disrupts that skyline for when you're out enjoying your community. And then we also said that they shouldn't be permitted on historic landmarks listed on the Hartford County Historic Landmark List. And again, that's for preservation of visual presentation, but also preservation of those landmarks so that anything installed on their roof isn't negatively impacting them. So those were just some of those other safeguards we put in place while also trying to make a pathway for people who wish to install something like this on their roof to be able to.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
With no other speakers signed up, this will conclude the public hearing for Bill 24-036, and it will be taken up at next, our next scheduled meeting. At this time, we'll open up Bill 24-037, zoning code Chapter 267, liquor stores B1 special exceptions. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope mine goes as easy as that one. Bill 2437 would allow liquor stores in B1 with a special exception. That means at the very, very minimum, they have to comply with the special exception standards, which in this case is reduce size and scope of signage and allow it to be harmonious with the relationship of the community. In addition to the special exception, it must prove that there are no adverse effects to the surrounding neighborhood, which is regulated by zoning code 267-9I, which states the following. Part one, the board shall not approve an application if it finds that the proposed building, addition, extensions of the building, or use, use of, or change of use would adversely affect the public health, safety, and general welfare or result in a dangerous traffic condition or jeopardize the lives of the property or people living in the neighborhood, natural resource district, Chesapeake Bay critical area, or is protected by permanent easement. The board may impose conditions or limitations on any approval, including the posting of performance guarantees with regard to any of the following. There's 10 of them. The number of persons living or working in the meeting area will be considered. Traffic conditions, as I mentioned, will be considered. Pedestrians, cyclists, sidewalks, parking facilities, all will be considered. Peak hours of traffic will be considered. The orderly growth of the neighborhood and the community will be considered and the fiscal impact of the community. The effects of odors, dust, gas, smokes, fumes, vibrations, glare, noise will also be considered. Facilities for police and fire and sewage and water and trash and garbage collection will also be considered according to the code. The degree of which development is consistent with the general accepting engineering and planning principles will be considered. The structures in the vicinity such as schools, houses, worship centers, theaters, hospitals, and similar places of public use will all be considered. The purpose set forth in part one, also the master plan and related studies for land use, roads, parks, schools, sewers, water population is number eight, and the environmental impact is number nine. And the preservation of cultural and historic landmarks will also be considered. So before any of the liquor stores will be permitted in a B1 under special exception, yes, the sign is one consideration, but there's also 10 other requirements that would be considered. Now, once the business complies with those standards, it will go to Planning and Zoning Department and who will provide a recommendation. That recommendation will then be provided to the zoning hearing examiner. And from there, the zoning hearing commander, examiner will then send a recommendation based on the community impact that I noted here. So this belief that it's only, has to comply with signage before it's approved is just false. It's not true. And there's a few reasons why this legislation is being introduced. Folks, it's time to support small business. We have to support small business. I know we have had a lot of different fee increases across our county, and I believe in small business, smart, balanced economic development. That's how we're going to grow. That's how we're going to be able to play, pay for schools and public safety, and it's time to support small business. In addition, we have constituents come to the council and advocate for their needs all the time. And I can tell you, this case is no different. We had a petition where 112 community members that are surrounding this particular liquor store that's advocating for this, sign a petition, 112 signatures on it. In addition, we had 40 emails in support of this liquor store. I could go through, I have a bunch of highlighted aspects of support, but I'll spare us all the time. That's why I'm supporting this adjustment from B1 allowing liquor stores with a special exception. I can tell you, I am disappointed with the misinformation that's been provided from the County Executive's Administration. And I'm going to go through a couple of those. This notion that liquor stores will inflate, infiltrate, or our communities is just false. We talked about this when this was introduced in a different way prior to this. One liquor store is only permitted for every 4,000 residents. My understanding, only less than a dozen liquor store license actually are permitted to go forward after this. This notion where it's impossible to deny application is just absurd. I've already talked about the special exceptions. In addition, the liquor store still has to comply with the liquor board. And I can tell you, I have an email that I provided all the council members with the liquor board chair, Wayne Goddard, weighing in on this. And one of the elements of this letter or this email says, he was frankly surprised that it's not already authorized in the B1 zoning classification. In addition, I'm going to read this, some of their restrictions they have. The notion that simply because the property is legally zoned for liquor stores does not mean the Hartford County Liquor Board will automatically grant a license. The proposed license will need to comply with all requirements to be a licensee, and there will most likely be a contested need in accommodations hearing. In point of fact, that the last such hearing resulted in the board not granting a license despite proper zoning for liquor stores. So you have the B1 special exception they have to adhere to. You have the 10 qualifications that they had to adhere to. And you also have the liquor board that they have to comply with. So this notion that they're just going to arbitrarily easily be permitted, that's just false. The idea of liquor stores not being intended and don't fill the community and family needs for B1, that's incorrect as well. The purpose of B1 zoning is provide sufficient and convenient locations of business uses to serve the needs of the community. I have read the support letters of surrounding neighbors of this business here that we're talking about. In addition, liquor stores are permitted in a village business, which is a whole lot less dense and more community needs. And finally, one important note, this business that I'm referring to is family owned. The owner works there every single day, seven days a week with his family. So it's family oriented. If it's not, I don't, I don't know what is. And the last point, well, actually two more points. This notion where this would allow marijuana dispensaries in the B1 is just false as well. You know, more and more is being learned about the marijuana regulations and state requirements that force the county to permit marijuana. I don't support marijuana. I'm probably the biggest opponent of it. I fought, you know, 12 years undercover in narcotics, you know, fighting against marijuana use and abuse. But if it's state law, it's state law. But I can tell you that under the code, specialty shops are authorized in R O V B, B1, B2, B3, and C1. So based off of retail specialty shops, marijuana is already permitted in B1. So the notion that this legislation will allow marijuana to be permitted in B1 is false. It's not true. It's already going to be permitted, just like the tobacco shops are already permitted in B1 around Hartford County. And there's also a discussion point where this is only suiting one business. Well, most of the legislation that we pass, most of the legislation that we introduce is to help our community partners. So yes, that spearheaded this. But it's no different than, I've given example of the towing legislation that we introduced and passed because we wanted to help out businesses. So that's what I'm doing. That's why this bill is here. I hope my colleagues on the council can support it, and it's time to support small business. It's time to give them the resources to be successful. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Counsel at this time, Mr. Riley?
Yes, just a couple of questions. How many B1 areas are there that this will affect, you know, in the county? Because this isn't just for that one business, this will be county wide.
That's correct. There are a number of B1s permitted all throughout the county, but just because they're zone B1 doesn't allow them to just arbitrarily be permitted.
They got to go through the liquor store. I got that.
So there's only, like I said, there is only less than 12 possible locations that can even be added throughout the county.
Oh, 12, thank you. And also, did you get any recommendation from planning and zoning?
I have not gotten recommendation from planning and zoning.
So they're not up or down on this? You haven't talked to them at all?
Well, they know of the legislation. I think we might hear from the administration, and that's the voice, I guess, from the planning and zoning department.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else? Mr. Janjordana?
So there was a bill that was brought last year that was going to allow liquor stores in a B1, which I totally disagreed with. As far as liquor stores in a B1 under special exception, I know there is a couple already. They're non-conforming now. Certainly didn't want to see them close down that had been operating for quite a while. So this was, this was a compromise to allow that. And as Councilman Pennman said, every single one of these have to be special exception. And of that, there can only be 12, I guess 12 liquor licenses left in the entire county, correct?
Well, right now, based off the population, one per every 4,000, there's only a certain amount, I think it's 64 that are even allowed, and of those 64, only 12 remain.
Okay, so we certainly don't want to dilute the other liquor stores that are here that are clawing, you know, sales of, actually, they peaked probably during the pandemic and they probably have decreased since then. So we don't want to see, you know, proliferation of liquor stores come in. And I think this was more of just, there was a few liquor stores that were operating that were non-conforming in a B1. I don't foresee anything else, and as we said, it's got to be special exception. So that's pretty much it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordana. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
Councilman Pennman, can you remind me if last year we voted on your previous legislation? And if we did, what was the vote total? How did that work out?
Bill was withdrawn.
It was withdrawn? And what were some of the key pieces of feedback then that led to that decision for you? And just in general, if you could remind the public what the debate and discourse was at the time?
Well, the discussion back then surrounded, you know, a lot of people supported this, as I mentioned before, and some did not support it. Some didn't want liquor stores in every corner, and we've already talked about, that just is not the case. Some opposed it because of the marijuana considerations, which I've already alluded to. It has no bearing on it. The liquor stores, I mean, excuse me, the marijuana dispensaries are already permitted in the B1 category. So after that legislation was withdrawn, I had discussions with several members of, on the council, my colleagues, who suggested the special exception. So in doing so, I just brought that forward, and I think this is a successful path.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. We have seven this evening.
Can you call your first speaker, but I will remind you have three minutes to speak.
Jeffrey Beck, followed by Beth Farmer Shear.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, sir. Jeffrey Beck, 102 Shell Road, Joppetown, Maryland. Good evening, Council President and council members. Thank you for your time this evening. According to Maryland Declaration of Rights, Article 6, all persons vested with the legislative and executive powers of government are the trustees of the public. As such, accountable for their conduct, our free government exists for the sole purpose of preserving and protecting the freedoms and liberties of its citizens. Every bill drafted, every amendment offered, and every press release issued ought to be preceded by the question of how this action will preserve the liberties of my constituents. The B1 district is defined as a neighborhood business. I do not feel that a liquor store meets that definition. I think B2, community business, is a much better fit for it. Bill 24-037, as presented this evening, is a little more than a resubmission of Bill 24-018, which Mr. Pennman referenced earlier, which was withdrawn in part due to public objections. Much like prior bill, this bill is also drafted for the benefit of one property, a property which also already has a pending request for comprehensive zoning review to upscale to a B2 property. This bill would affect not just one property, but every other B1 property in the county, as well as residential neighborhoods surrounding those properties. As I remind this chamber every time I speak, our government's purpose is to preserve and protect the freedoms and liberties of all of its citizens. Unfortunately, this bill seems to attempt to offer a special privilege to one property outside of a well-established method available to the property owner to accomplish that goal. A method that every other property owner in Hartford County must still abide by. Any B1 business may request to upzone to a zoning designation that allows for this more intense use. And indeed, the property owner has done this. This is a far more appropriate, far more appropriate than a wholesale allowance of liquor stores in neighborhoods, as it gives the public the ability to question an individual location, and it allows the county to grant or deny these zoning changes on a case-by-case basis. Rapidly evolving state law, as I understand it, could soon allow for cannabis dispensaries adjacent to liquor stores. I'll have to do some more research on the zoning for those, sir. To be clear, my issue this evening is not with the business for which this bill was drafted, nor do I necessarily object to the request for the zoning change from B1 to B2 for this property. My issue is with the introduction of legislation for the benefit of one person or one property. My issue is with trying to take a legislative shortcut around the established process for zoning changes. For these reasons, I urge the councilmen to withdraw the bill or for the council to vote no on Bill 24-037. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Beth Shear. My address is 2814 Cross Country Court in Fallston, Maryland. I have significant concern about the practice of legislation being proposed and considered in order to enable a property with a longtime non-conforming use to be corrected by way of creating a permanent legislation that impacts not just the non-conforming property, but the entire county. In the case of Bill 24037, it has potential to impact the use of approximately 200 B1 zoned properties in the county. 2410 Old Mountain Road was purchased in 2005 by its current owner with full knowledge of its use as a deli and a liquor store. The public remarks on the real estate listing itself touted the new deli equipment and the B1 zoning with deli with a liquor store. It was described additionally as a joint business opportunity. It was made very clear that this was a deli with a liquor store. That is a compliant use. It could currently be compliant if the owner chose to maintain what was purchased originally. The adjacent properties are zoned agricultural and used for residential purposes. There should never be any expectation from any individual property owner that there can be a modification to county law to create something other than what they purchased and agreed to by signing a deed to a property and filing that deed. The owner does have a choice here, comply with zoning that he or she initially agreed to in 2005, and maintain the deli that they agreed to run along with the liquor store and have a fully compliant and conforming business. A happy and well-run small business, and I have to believe that the neighbors would enjoy both in that area because it is far away from eateries, et cetera, having a deli along with the liquor store. Changing zoning legislation for the entire county to create compliance for any property should not be a choice. And as to the point of a special exception, special exceptions require monitoring. The county does not have the staff to do this effectively. The county does not have the staff to do this effectively or efficiently at this time. And we know that special exceptions, once they're granted, they generally don't get maintained or watched unless somebody in the community contacts zoning enforcement. So based on that, I oppose this legislation, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Diana Sadowski, followed by Steve Overbay.
Good evening, ma'am, name and address, please.
Good evening, Diana Sadowski, 1113 Stromco Drive, Fallston, Maryland. This morning, I actually emailed every one of you, and you already have my comments and know where I stand on this issue regarding Bill 24-037. But I wanted to have some oral comments also. I'm in agreement with the previous speakers. I think that there's a mechanism already in place for an owner to go ahead and upgrade and, and request upzoning for their properties. And I understand that this property has been put in for upzoning to a B2. And I think that the process should be allowed to just continue to the way that it is and not go through any kind of exception process ahead of the game. I think it's illogical for us to move ahead with this. I think that it's, we need to wait out the zoning decision on the business before introducing any special exceptions. It's surprising to me that someone would purchase a business knowing full well what they're getting and then running it for 19 years illegally, essentially. So it's important that this be resolved, and I understand that. But I think it's also important, as Beth mentioned earlier, that the community surrounding it would probably appreciate that deli coming back because of its location. I think it's important for the community. But I also am in, in a bit taking an exception to councilmen from District B saying that this doesn't necessarily mean that cannabis dispensaries can be there. To me, this just simply opens another door. You know, I've always thought to myself that, you know, when you see Tobacco Hut come into the community, we're in trouble, and I'm already seeing that. Why do we want to bring more trouble into the county? I grew up too, Councilman Bennett, with an alcoholic father. How many more, how many more liquor stores do we need in our communities? Not only liquor now, we worry about drunk driving, but we're going to have to worry about the cannabis usage. I'm seeing more and more advertisement on television about being aware of now getting into a vehicle and worrying about people who are driving high. And here, we're just going to add more to it. That wasn't included in my earlier emails, but I felt it necessary to be said. I just think this is opening a whole can of worms. And this Grammy and the community and the constituents in the community who I've talked to are against all of this. And I hope that you all are listening, and I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir, name and address, please.
Steven Overbay, 123 Joe Hill Drive, Haverdegrace, Maryland. Good evening, Council President and members of the council. Again, my name is Steve Overbay. I'm here representing County Executive Castle and Harford County Government's opposition to Bill Number 24037, which seeks to allow liquor stores in the county's B1 neighborhood business districts with special exception. The B1 neighborhood business classification was established to provide limited retail and service facilities that enhance quality of life and are tailored to the needs of residential neighborhoods. Uses such as community centers, daycare centers, libraries and parks are permitted within B1 as they coexist without compromising our family-oriented communities. Passage of this bill would contradict the intent of the B1 designation and create a precedent that presumes liquor stores are both desired and accepted as compatible within our family centers. Sweeping changes to county zoning classifications designed to protect our neighborhoods do not come without consequence. One such consequence is that the state of Maryland has been very clear and spelled out recently that recreational-use cannabis will not be permitted to be treated differently or in a more restrictive fashion than liquor sales. That said, if Bill 24037 passes and we are to allow liquor stores by special exemption on any of the 232 parcels within our residential neighborhoods currently zoned B1, the county will be subject to unnecessary litigation if we do not allow recreational cannabis sales within the same communities. We must proceed with great caution as the proposed zoning change exposes our residents and neighbors to a myriad of detrimental community impacts with unknown consequences. Today, the county has ample zoning classifications and available parcels, which are much better suited to liquor sales, such as VB, B2, B3, and C1. In the event that there are singular parcel owners that seek to make a case for being treated differently, the county oversees an application process which allows developers and residents to apply to alter their specific zoning designation. The county is currently in possession of two such applications, including the parcel in question, seeking to rezone parcels zoned as B1 into classifications that permit liquor stores. This is a far more prudent, effective means of addressing one-off requests rather than generalizations that impact hundreds of parcels and sets a potentially dangerous precedent for our residents. I respectfully urge the council to reject Bill 24037 in support of zoning standards that align with Harford County's values. This opportunity to ensure our neighborhoods remain safe and family-friendly should not be squandered. Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Stephanie Flash, followed by Larry Dean.
Good evening, ma'am, name and address, please.
Good evening, Stephanie Flash, I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of Harford and a 1902 Norwood Court, Fallston, Maryland. Friends of Harford opposes Bill 24037. While we do value the contributions of local businesses to our community, this bill does raise significant concerns. It proposes a zoning change that would allow liquor stores of the B1 district's by special exception, which we understand, a change though seemingly just tailored for one specific property, as we've heard today. This has potentially far-reaching consequences. Currently, the liquor stores are allowed in the village business, which are similar in intensity, as mentioned, to B1, but they are limited to nine areas. They're also allowed in more intensive areas like B2 and B3. Current zoning right now ensures that the liquor stores are placed in areas that align with the character and needs of the surrounding neighborhoods. However, if this legislation is approved, which they're allowed to be one, this would include over 200 parcels, as we've heard today, too. This could have a much larger impact compared to the nine limited village business locations, which is being used as the basis for this change in legis, change in legislation. This proposed legislation risks increasing the concentration of liquor stores, especially in residential areas, and opens the door for state-level laws that allow cannabis dispensaries in liquor store locations. Bill 24-009, the zoning for cannabis dispensary, which failed to pass on May 21, 2024, highlighted the connection between cannabis dispensaries and liquor stores. During the discussion, Councilman Penman expressed his opinion that he would make cannabis illegal in Harford County, but acknowledged the county does not have the authority over the state law. He referred to House Bill 805, which prohibits localities from enacting stricter zoning for retail dealers, effectively allowing liquor store locations to be used for cannabis dispensaries. Councilman Penman reiterated his opposition to cannabis dispensaries in the county. The county council then voted seven to zero against the bill just in order to uphold the state regulations that govern the dispensary locations, which would override county zoning, permitting the use of the liquor store sites. Given the county's understanding of state-imposed regulation, it raises the question of why legislation is being considered to expand the use of liquor store location sites, even by special exception, into residential areas when state-level cannabis regulations may conflict with local concerns about dispensaries' proximity to neighborhoods. We ask the county council to maintain the current zoning, preserve the character of our neighborhoods, and prioritize the well-being of the entire county over the interest of a single property owner. Please vote against Bill 24-037.
Thank you, ma'am.
Larry Dean, followed by Mike Shorman.
Good evening, sir, name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Larry Dean, and I currently live at 368 Emery Church Road, Street, Maryland. I'm also the owner of Belair Liquors in Belair, Maryland, here at 315 South Main Street. And I also own the property there, which is owned B3. So one of the reasons I'm here is, do we have the know how many current liquor licenses are improperly zoned and, and B1-zoned locations besides the one that Mr. Penman is referring to?
Mr. Dean, no one's going to answer that question.
Okay, and then the other thing is, the procedure in which to go and make these properties in line and in compliance with a special exception is an improvement over last year's introduction. But it's still concerning that, you know, I think the cleaner way to resolve the situation would be to have each individual property owner come forth and ask to have their zoning changed from B1 to either B2 or B3, instead of open up the door of allowing or having over 200 properties being now permissible for a use that, from what I'm hearing from the other people who've presented arguments, that it sounds like the community, to me, is concerned about the, what has been presented as being a clean solution or just a quick, easy solution to a small problem for one specific property owner. That concludes my statements.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir, name and address, please.
Good evening, Council, Mike Shorman, 3520 Woodsdale Road, Abingdon, Maryland. I also own Friendship Wine and Liquor and am the former president of the Beverage Association of Maryland. I'm just here also in opposition to this zoning proposal and just want to echo the statements that were already presented. It's really all I have to say.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no more speakers, this will conclude the public hearing for Bill 24-037. This also will be taken up at our next meeting. And with that, we're going to take a recess for about 18 minutes. Session Day 24-032. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilmember Janjordana.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we gather this season, we thank you for your blessings in our lives and our community. Guide us with wisdom and compassion in our decisions and help us serve with unity and integrity. May this time inspire us to care for those in need and to spread kindness and goodwill throughout our county. Bless our families, neighbors, colleagues. Fill our hearts with peace and our work with purpose. Be with us in this meeting and throughout the season of hope and joy, amen.
Amen. Council, if I may, I'd like to welcome Delegate Riley to the chamber this evening, Sheriff Gaylor and Colonel Davis. Agenda item number four, Presentation of Proclamations, Harford County Crime Solvers. Mr. Penman?
Whereas the Harford County Crime Solvers, established on June 7, 1987, have played a vital role in fostering a safer environment by providing an anonymous and secure platform for citizens to report information on crimes, adding law enforcement in an arrest and prosecution of criminals, and enhancing the overall security of our community. And whereas Crime Solvers exemplifies the power of the community engagement by protecting the anonymity of those who provide vital information, offering financial rewards for tips that lead to successful criminal resolutions and encouraging collaboration between the public and law enforcement, thus allowing the citizens to contribute to public safety without fear of retribution. And whereas the ongoing success of Crime Solvers demonstrate the positive impact of organized community efforts on crime prevention and public safety, setting an outstanding example of how citizen involvement can strengthen law enforcement and enhance the safety and well-being of all who live and work in Harford County. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Harford County, Maryland, on this 10th day of December 2024, do hereby recognize Harford Crime Solvers 37 years of service and extend our sincere gratitude for their unwavering commitment and dedication to the safety of Harford County.
I want to thank, my own? I want to thank you guys for the incredible organization that you have built over the years. I know Helga couldn't make it, she's the chair. Since 1987, you have been a great community partner, not just with the sheriff's office, but entire law enforcement, keeping our community safe. And community partners is what it's all about. Served a number of years in community outreach and building those relationships like we have here is why Harford County is the place to live and so successful here. So an incredible accomplishment, thank you for your service. And with that, I think I'm going to present this proclamation here. Want to hold that right there and get one photo. And then I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Montaba, who is the liaison, or was the liaison, for the organization.
Appreciate that, I didn't have anything prepared. For about four years, I worked as the liaison between the Harford County Sheriff's Office and Harford County Crime Solvers. And in that time, the organization provides a service that is, without question, you know, unmeasurable. The service that they provide, I received and handled multiple tips for Harford County Sheriff's Office, Haverdegrace Police, Aberdeen and Belair. I mean, they pay out anonymous rewards to the tipsters, and the information was invaluable because it was information we didn't already have. So without Harford County Crime Solvers, there are some crimes in Harford County that just wouldn't have been solved. So they deserve a round of applause.
I tell you, there are some news articles that Sue sent me from going back to 1987, and some of the things they have accomplished is really, really incredible. So thank you for your service. I know I'm going to keep you up here because I know Sheriff Gaylor and the Colonel are going to come up, and they're going to present you with a word as well.
And a deputy warden as well.
Sorry.
And a warden, and a warden.
Thank you, thank you, Council President, council members, for allowing us a few minutes to intrude on the meeting and also recognize Crime Solvers on their 37th anniversary. We have a sheriff salute for you. Looks better than the, no, it doesn't. But again, 1987 is the year I actually came up wearing a different uniform that I came to this county down the local state police barracks on the corner. So it's quite a few years ago, but shows how long and lasting and impactful the organization has been. Worked the road with Wendell there for a few days, a few shifts. So we have a sheriff salute, and it reads, whereas this year, the year of 2024 marks the 37th anniversary of the Harford County Crime Solvers Program, a distinguished civic group that continues to be a crucial part of Harford's present and future. And whereas Crime Solvers has proven that citizen involvement is a powerful weapon in combating and solving crime and can be used effectively to enhance the efforts of local law enforcement. And whereas since its inception, Harford County Crime Solvers has proven to be an effective and cost-efficient weapon against crime with an impressive record of crimes solved and property recovered. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey R. Gaylor, Sheriff of Harford County, on behalf of the men and women, many of whom who are with us tonight, the men and women of the Harford County Sheriff's Office, do salute the Harford County Crime Solvers for their loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of Harford County by awarding them this sheriff salute. Thank you all for what you do, and congratulations.
All right. Thank you all.
Hang on one second. Wendell, Tanya, Brenda, Sue, do you guys want to say anything? No? Wendell? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Agenda item number five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, nominations. We have none. Six, special presentations. We have none. Seven, approval of minutes, legislative date twenty-four dash zero thirty-one, December three, twenty twenty-four. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections to minutes, staying approved. Mr. Janice Dano, please read Resolutions zero forty-two twenty-four and zero forty-three twenty-four. Enter the record, please.
Resolution zero forty-two dash twenty-four, Notice of Sale CPI Bonds Series Twenty Twenty-Five A, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the issuance, sale, and delivery by Hartford County, Maryland, the county, of its bonds designated Hartford County, Maryland Consolidated Public Improvement Bonds Series Twenty Twenty-Five A, the CPI, CPI bonds, and the original aggregate principal amount not to exceed sixty million pursuant to the provisions of Section nineteen dash one oh one of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, two thousand thirteen replacement volume and twenty twenty-four supplement. The Consolidated Bonds Act, Section five twenty-four, the Charter of Hartford County, the Charter, and Sections one twenty-three dash forty and two fifty-six dash twenty-six of the Code of Hartford County, the County Code, confirming that the principal amount, if any, and interest there and shall be general obligations of the county secured by its full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power, determining that CPI bonds shall be sold by competitive bid, appointing a bond register and paying agent for the CPI bonds, approving the substantiability, substantiality, final forms of various documents be executed on behalf of the county in connection with the, with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the CP bonds, determining the date of sale, determining the average probable useful life of the improvements or undertakings with respect to which indebtedness evidenced by the CPI bonds is to be incurred, determining various other matters in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the CPA bonds, including but not limited to provisions in the notice of sale for changes in the aggregate principal amount of CPI bonds to be sold and changes in the principal amount to be matured in certain years, and determining that the CPA bond shall be consolidated for the purpose of sale. Resolution zero forty-three dash twenty-four, Notice of Sale Refunding Bonds Series Twenty Twenty-Five B, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the issuance, sale, and delivery by Hartford County, Maryland, the county, of its bonds designated Hartford County, Maryland, refunding bonds Series Twenty Twenty-Five B, the refunding bonds, and the original aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifty-eight million pursuant to the provisions of Section nineteen dash two zero seven of the Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, two thousand thirteen replacement volume and twenty twenty-four supplement, the Refunding Bonds Act, Section five twenty-four, the Charter of Hartford County, the Charter, Sections one twenty-three dash forty and two fifty-six dash twenty-six of the Code of Hartford County, the County Code, and Bill number twenty-one dash zero two one enacted on November second, twenty twenty-one, effective January third, twenty twenty-two, the refunding bill for the purpose of financing the refunding of certain maturities of the counties outstanding Hartford County, Maryland Consolidated Public Improvement Bonds Series Twenty Fifteen A issued by the county pursuant to Bills fourteen dash twenty-four, fifteen dash eighteen, sixteen dash nineteen, seventeen dash ten. As amended, eighteen dash zero nine, nineteen dash fourteen, and twenty dash fourteen. As amended, the outstanding two zero one five A bonds, the refunding of certain maturities of the county outstanding Hartford County, Maryland Refunding Bonds Series Twenty Fifteen issued by the county pursuant to Bills number fourteen dash twenty-four, fifteen dash eighteen, sixteen dash nineteen, seventeen dash ten. As amended, eighteen dash zero nine, nineteen dash fourteen, and twenty fourteen. As amended, the outstanding Twenty Fifteen B bonds and together with its outstanding Twenty Fifteen A bonds, the outstanding bonds and including accrued interest and cost of issuance, providing for the increase or decrease in the aggregate principal amount, other refunding bonds not to exceed fifty-eight million, confirming that the principal premium, if any, and interest there and shall be general obligations of the county secured by its full faith and credit and unlimited taxing power, determining that the refunding bonds shall be sold by competitive bid, appointing a bond register and paying agent for the refunding bonds, approving the substantial, substantiality, final forms of various documents to be executed on behalf of the county in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of their refunding bonds, including an escrow deposit agreement, if necessary, determining the date of sale, determining various other matters in connection with the issuance, sale, and delivery of the refunding bonds, including but not limited to provisions in a notice of sale for changes in the aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds to be sold and changes in the principal amount to mature in certain years.
Thank you, Mr. Janice Dano. So, as a other part of eight introductions and considerations of resolutions, we'll have Mr. Salins here this evening, Mr. Senet from Miles and Stockbridge. Gentlemen, thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'll let our bond counsel talk about the legislation, then I'll talk a little bit about the bond sale process, as well as some of the individual projects that are included in the sale.
Thank you, Robbie. Good evening, Mr. President and County Council. As you mentioned, my name is Chris Senet. I'm here again from Miles and Stockbridge to discuss the two resolutions before you this evening. These resolutions are Resolution forty-two dash twenty-four and forty-three dash twenty-four. As Mr. Giannano said, authorize the sale of Hartford County's Twenty Twenty-Five CPI bonds and the Twenty Twenty-Five refunding bonds, respectively. I'll begin my discussion with Resolution number forty-two dash twenty-four. Earlier this year, we were here informing the council. The council approved Bill number twenty-four dash twenty-seven and Bill number twenty-four dash twenty-eight and twenty-four dash twenty-nine, authorizing and empowering the county to issue its Twenty Twenty-Five bonds for county projects, including projects related to water, sewer, and other infrastructure. The bill authorized the council to adopt one or more resolutions to sell its bonds at a later date upon a public sale. These resolutions are those notice of sale resolutions. They provide notice that the public sale will occur on February fourth, twenty twenty-five, that all bids will be received by the county treasurer in coordination with Davenport and Company on this date. The notice of sale in form is attached to the CPI resolution as Exhibit B. The resolution author also authorizes the notice of sale to be published in the Hartford County Aegis, provides the flexibility to the county to sell fewer than sixty million in bonds upon advice of Davenport as the county's financial advisor. The resolution outlines the installments and maturities expected to be sold at the February fourth, twenty twenty-five sale. In addition, it sets forth the terms for redeeming the bonds, provides at Exhibit C, the form of the bonds that are to be sold on February fourth, the repayment sources for the bonds, and the internal revenue code provisions applicable to the bonds that we opine upon as bond counsel in order to maintain the bond's tax-exempt status. Once the bonds are sold, the resolution authorizes the county to apply the funds of the bonds to the specific projects listed on Exhibit D to the resolution. It also provides that the county shall use the Depository Trust Company as the clearinghouse for the bonds and Manufacturers and Traders Trust Company as the paying agent for the bonds. Finally, the county council authorized the county executive and other officials of the county to sign the appropriate bond documents in order to effectuate the bond sale on February fourth. Under the second resolution, Resolution number forty-three dash twenty-four, this was regarding the Twenty Twenty-Five refunding bonds on the county. Back in November twenty twenty-one, the county adopted Bill number twenty-one dash twenty-one, authorizing the county to issue up to a hundred and seventy million in refunding bonds for various Series Twenty Thirteen, Twenty Fourteen, Twenty Fifteen. The bill authorized the county council to adopt a resolution on a later date, giving the county the authority to refund its outstanding Twenty Fifteen A and Twenty Fifteen B bonds, which are the only bonds that are covered by the resolution before you today. As with the prior resolution, the CPI resolution, Resolution forty-three dash twenty-four also sets forth the terms of the bonds, the notice of sale, the forms of the bonds, the same internal revenue code provisions ensuring that the interest on the bonds remains tax-exempt and that we cover in our bond counsel opinion. Given these are refunding bonds, the resolution gives the county the flexibility to issue less than fifty-eight million if the county treasurer is advised by Davenport that savings will be achieved by only refunding certain amounts of those series. In addition, as mentioned by Mr. Giannano, the resolution authorizes an escrow deposit agreement and a forward purchase contract to facilitate the maximum savings from the county on the refunding, as with the prior resolution, CPI resolution. The county council grants the county executive, the county treasurer, and other county officials the authority to execute documentation relating to the sale on February fourth. Finally, as Robbie will discuss further after the February fourth sale, we will again approach the council with additional resolutions, setting forth the exact terms of the bonds, including appropriate denominations, interest rates, and maturity years. At this time, before turning back over to Robbie, I'm happy to discuss any questions the council may have on these resolutions.
So, it was, appreciate, appreciate the update and everything. Appreciate all you do. It was brought to my attention today that we had an issue that we have to deal with as far as the bonds.
And I think that's just going to be a minor technical amendment. There's a project, as we said before, all of the projects are listed, project name, as well as the dollar amount that we're selling the bonds for. Sometimes, a project is open and then is open and closed and then reopened to the same project number. And that's what we have in the case of, I believe it's Hookers Mill Bridge. It's the same project, but it had two different project numbers. So, the project number that's listed here is, is a, the prior number, and then it was updated in twenty twenty-two. So, we had a twenty, a twenty-twenty version and a twenty-twenty-two version, still again the same project. So, we'll be asking just for an amendment next week to just change that project number. But it's not a substantial change. You know, the, the total dollar amount doesn't change. Not the actual project doesn't change. Just there's a, there's oftentimes a lot of individual numbers at, at play, and sometimes projects are open and closed, but...
Yeah. But I think it's, it's, it needs to be noted that Ms. Allegi and Ms. Herbeck looked at the legality of the bonds and everything was fine there, but Crystal Brooks, our auditor, found a little discrepancy, and she was able to bring it to our attention, bring it to your attention, which will then bring the amendment so we can move forward with this. So...
Exactly. Yes. We discussed that with Ms. Allegi today.
Very good. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. A little disturbed about the technical issue on this bond. You know, when you sell bonds, people buy bonds based off of what's in the bond. And if there was a mistake that wasn't caught, it could be, you know, cause issues down the road. And this isn't the first mistake. Last week, there was a bill here that had to be withdrawn because there was a mistake with the county. And there was a bunch of mistakes as far as amendments in some of this legislation. So, my concern is, where is the QC being done? And why does these, why are these mistakes continually happening? Because if I remember correctly, it wasn't so long ago that the administration called us a bunch of part-timers, but yet the part-timers are finding and correcting all the mistakes that the administration is making.
I'm not sure what the answer you were looking for in this, in the situation is. As I said before, we had a list of all of the projects, and then in this case, it was a project that, that had two, two distinct numbers. I don't think it's anything that is a substantial or material issue. The amount of bonds is correct. It was, I would say it was simply a typo, you know, error on this. And I can't speak to the other, whatever the other, other legislation, as that wasn't treasury legislation. You know, so again, these, these bond bills have a lot of, you know, they're encompassing lots of, of, you know, prior, prior budget years, prior, prior bond authorization years, a lot of reappropriations and all. And there are sometimes some, some, you know, discrepancies which we're trying to work through. I think we, we made a good faith effort to get the draft legislation to, to your council, council attorney, you know, well in advance so that we can, you know, iron all of this out and deal with it. And again, I mean, I view all of this as generally as very much a collaborative effort. I don't think we're trying to do anything nefarious here. So, you know, that's, in that case. But it's, you know, again, this is a triple-A rated county. I, none of these, you know, there are, there were some issues here that, that, you know, we are, we are correcting, but I don't believe they were material in any sense.
But these are continuously more and more mistakes. So, what measures are being taken on the county to prevent these mistakes? Because if the county council attorney caught them, why couldn't the county law department catch these?
Well, I'll, I'll speak to the process of bond counsel. I mean, we, we, we don't go through every single project. We receive this, this information from the county. However, we do make a good faith effort to engage with both the council attorney and office of law. So, these bills are reviewed continuously, I'd say, between myself, my paralegal, several lawyers in the office of law, Ms. Allegi. So, I mean, this, this is a process that goes through several, several weeks, several months, and we make our best effort to catch everything of this nature that could potentially hold up the bill. And this was something that was caught today, and we made our best effort, Councilman Pennman.
Yeah. And I believe the other, you know, there were some other issues that dealt, dealt with getting the exact date, as there was a discrepancy between whether or not the, the effective date was, was, you know, the bill was introduced versus that the, versus that the bill was, was signed by council. You know, again, you know, we're tracking this in, in, in treasury, you know, according to, you know, the legislation numbers that, that come down, and that's what, you know, what we're providing. But again, I don't believe any of this is a material issue. Again, and I won't speak to whatever the other issues are, because I don't know enough about the other, the other bits of legislation. But I think that these, you know, these, you know, these issues are not material. This is a triple-A rated county. We have received unqualified audit opinions. You know, there are, there are lots of, of individual project numbers and the like, you know, at, at, at play here. And again, you know, we're, we're working, we're working to, to get this legislation in, in a, in a timely manner.
Mr. Janice Dano?
Yeah. So, what would happen if the bill goes through and there is errors? Is there, is there any repercussions to, to that? Will it still get funded? Can somebody call the bonds and say they're invalid? I mean, what's the bottom line if something is wrong?
No. I mean, for, for this project, an internal, for what's being discussed here, this is an internal project designation to the county. Does a bond investor particularly care which, if it's the same project, if it's called one different project number by the county versus another, that is not material to an investor. If it was disclosed in a POS or in the resolution, we would not, we would potentially call that out in the OS and say that this is corrected. But it's not something that would hold up the bond, the bond purchase, the bond sale. It's not something that if I were a bond investor, that I'd be particularly concerned about, given that in this case, it's the same project that's being funded. It's just an internal designation that isn't correct, that is only specific to the county.
Yeah. It's just the workday, you know, cost index.
If it was wrong, totally wrong, and it was a wrong project altogether, and the bond went through, is there any repercussions to that?
In that, I mean, again, it's a disclosure issue. It would be, this was approved. We would have to amend the resolution, as we're doing. We would have to disclose in the, in the OS that, hey, this was incorrectly approved in the resolution. It's not a, an issue that would hold up or, you know, that would cause, you know, litigation of any type. It's merely a, hey, this is, this is, this is an issue that was amended between the, with the POS and the OS. And then as long as the, the investor themselves is aware of it, that I don't see it as a material concern.
Yeah. And many other jurisdictions, you know, we, we here have traditionally shown all the projects as, you know, as in an individual basis. Because you could go to Baltimore County or Baltimore City, you know, they'll just do them in blocks of school bonds, you know. And so, they're, again, this is much more of an internal thing. I think, you know, this county, this has a long history of, of disclosing the individual projects. And it's one of the points I was going to, it was going to get to, is that, you know, we, when we're talking about the county's bonds here, you know, these are only for, you know, these long-term capital assets. We're not taking out or issuing debt for any type of, you know, operating expenditure or, or anything like that. And as such, there are rules that, that deal with, you know, making sure that these long-term capital investments are, you know, not subject to private use, or you wouldn't do anything that would run afoul of, of our, of our IRS designation. Again, so then that's why we do, you know, make sure that we do list the projects out individually. You know, the real detail of the projects is oftentimes in, in the budget book. Again, though, the index code is, is, is a non-material issue. That's just kind of a, an identification number, you know, internally.
Thank you. Mr. Ben?
Thank you. I appreciate your explanations. I think they're more than satisfactory. It seems like a very simple thing, and I appreciate it being addressed. Can you talk a little bit about what you're expecting the market to be like this year? What you're anticipating for bond sales to be like compared to the previous few years?
So, you know, again, we are a triple-A rated county, and in mid-January, you know, we will have, you know, in front of the three agencies to, you know, hopefully have that, that reaffirmed. And certainly, that is our expectation in, in all of our conversations with our financial advisor, you know, indicate that our metrics, as far as the scorecards go, that, you know, that we are remaining a triple-A rated county. The most recent county in Maryland County that sold as triple-A rated county a few, about a month or two ago, was Carroll County. They sold for three point four three. That's kind of the current estimate. Now, last couple of years, we've received three point, you know, two five. So, we'll see if it goes, you, in, in that, in that direction. You know, again, you know, three point four three is still a, is still a pretty strong rate. You know, obviously, we're going to try to get the best rate that we can. As it relates to the refunding bonds, so now the refunding bonds are from... As it relates to the refunding bonds, so now the refunding bonds are from, this is, this would be us refunding the 2015 bonds, which were coincidentally the first bonds that I sold in Hartford County when I was here for about a week or two. And you can now only refund bonds after 10 years. You used to be able to refund them earlier, but one of the provisions of the Tax and Jobs, Tax Cut Act about eight years ago was that you couldn't do any more advanced refunding. Now, in that case, we now have, have a rate of closer to around, closer to around, you know, 3% on those bonds. So, we need to get a rate that's more around 2%. Now, you're only doing it for 10 years, so you oftentimes can get a, you will get a lower rate for 10 years than you will for 20. But if we look at it now, and I feel sorry that Councilman Jan Giordano had to read all the refunding bills, because it's probably not going to happen, but we want to be prepared. Because the process is so long and entailed with, with the bond sale, you know, we sometimes have to take preemptive measures, be like, okay, let's, let's prepare for it, and if we're, the market changes, we'll be ready to go and hopefully get those refundings. But at this point, I think it's highly, highly unlikely. But on the new bonds, 3.43%.
I appreciate you sharing that, because I know in the past few years, there's been like ripe opportunity to have some substantial savings from refunding bonds, and I was just curious if it, it seems like we're pretty much for now done with those opportunities.
Yeah, this was a little bit on the cusp. I mean, this was right kind of at the beginning of when the rate started, you know, to go, to go down. The 2015 issuance was actually, I think, under, under 3%, but oftentimes, the lower coupon rates are stacked in front, and then the higher ones in the, in the back, at least that's how it was 10 years ago. Now, they've kind of reversed it because of the new refunding rules. So, yeah, there's not a ton of opportunities, but, you know, again, we seem to live in a world where, you know, expect the unexpected. So, I would need the rates to go from about 2.8%. Right now, 10 years, about 2.8%. So, I need to go, you know, down to about 2%. I mean, that's, you know, 80 basis points. It's, again, pretty unlikely, but it's, it's not unheard of that you've seen that kind of a swing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Penn?
One more follow-up question to that. So, you're looking forward to doing 2% if I'm getting what you're saying?
Well, I'm, no, I'm saying is that the, so we have, so we have two issuances here. We have, we have the new, the new bonds, which are $60 million, and those are largely projects from the past couple of years. They've all been budgeted and all of that. And that's, that I expect, if we were to sell right today, it would probably be around 3.4%. Again, it could go up or it could go down by the time we do sell in mid, in early, early February. If we were to sell refunding bonds right now, the 10-year refunding bonds, we think they would bring about 2.8%. But in order to make it worth our while, in order to do it, you know, we need to get a rate more of a 2%. So, we're not going to, it'd be like kind of, you know, if you had a home mortgage, you know, even if you had a slightly lower rate, you still might not do a refi because you have points and time and effort and headaches and all of that. So, that's kind of where we are now. The financial advisors are generally looking for savings of, you know, 3% of net present value. So, that's what, that's kind of the load or the guide that we're looking for, so.
How, how long is that window, would you think, where you look? And once you decide to do it, actually implementing the sale?
Well, we're going to go to, we're, I mean, you know, assuming that, that you all pass both resolutions, that, you know, we're going to go to New York, and we're going to, you know, ask to be rated for both, for both of those. But as we get closer to the date, you know, we can, you know, pull it, you know, you could technically even do it that day. We would probably not, just because you don't want to play games with the investment community. So, you know, we'll have, you know, we'll probably be making that call, you know, a couple of days or so before, you know, to make sure that, yep, this is where the market, this is where the market is. But if we don't take these steps now, then the opportunity's lost. So, it's, it's just being pre.
And we've done that before, right?
Yeah, yeah, and we've actually refunded, you know, the past, you know, we've done quite a few refundings, both, you know, this administration has done one, we've, last year, and then we have also done several in the previous administration, again, taking advantage of those lower rates.
Where we didn't sell, yeah. Counsel, anything else? Robbie, if, refresh my memory, last night when we were at APFO, did we talk about state distributions, any recent coming in, income tax or?
No, we didn't talk about any.
Okay, all right. I couldn't remember whether we talked about that or not.
Can we talk about that?
I'll get with him later.
Yes, he knows everything.
And then, just to, you know, just so that we can, you know, again, have it on the record, so that $60 million of new projects, which you said before, have all been through the council budget, they've all been approved through the council budget process. And we typically, though, don't sell bonds as soon as they are budgeted. We wait until we have either already spent the money and are reimbursing ourselves, or we are assured that we are going to be spending the money in the next, the next few months. There's a lot of rules behind how you can, you can't forward fund too much, you know, arbitrage and the like. So, when we look at these projects, I would say about, of that $60 million, approximately half of it is related to school projects, 22 direct million in school projects, and also about 6 million, a little bit more than 6 million in some land acquisition related to the Hartford Academy project. Another significant project is the College Chesapeake Welcome Center at $8 million. We have $5 million in public safety, $4 million in water and sewer. Again, those water and sewers are not, we don't use tax dollars to fund those, we only use water and sewer user fees. Parks is approximately 3 million, highways, $4 million in stormwater, $2 million, so.
All right, very good. Then I don't anticipate any issues next week. We'll see some sort of an amended version, and we'll move it through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counsel.
Yep. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Bills 24-040 and 24-041.
Bill 24-040, Solid Waste Management Plan as Introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An act to reappeal and reenact with amendments, Section 109-8, Solid Waste Management Plan of Article I, General Provisions of Chapter 109, Environmental Control, the Hartford County Code as amended, to provide for the adoption of a revised September 2024 Solid Waste Management Plan governing all aspects of solid waste for Hartford County. To provide that the county may change the plan by resolution adopted by the county council if the Maryland Department of the Environment disapproves of or requires change to any part of the plan in generally relating to the Solid Waste Management Plan. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, January 14, 2025, at 7:15 p.m. in these council chambers. Bill 24-041, Chapter 267, Zoning Setbacks for Extraction and Blasting Activities as Introduced, introduced by Councilmember Riley. An act to reappeal and reenact with amendments, Subsection C, Quotation III, Extraction Activities in the CI and GI districts of Section 267-60, CILI and GI Industrial Districts of Article VII, District Regulations to Reappeal, Reenact with Amendments, Subsection E, I, Mineral Extracting and Processing of Section 267-88, Specific Standards of Article IX, Special Exceptions, All of Part I, Standards of Chapter 267, Zoning All of the Hartford County Code as amended to Require the Setbacks for Extraction and Blasting Activities that are set forth in Title 26 of the Code, Other Maryland Regulations in General Related to Zoning. Public hearing scheduled on Tuesday, January 14, 2025, at 7:15 p.m. in these council chambers.
Thank you. Agenda Number 10, Introduction and Consideration of Amendments. We have none. 11, Call for Final Reading of Bills. We have none. 12, Enrollment of Bills. We have none. 13, Unfinished Business. We have none. 14, New Business. We have none. 17, Comment from Attending Citizens.
We have one speaker, Mr. President, Pam Deemer.
Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Pam Deemer. I live at 928 Bergen Court, Bel Air, Maryland. Thank you for listening. I'm sure you are aware that the county's municipal animal shelter management by the Humane Society of Hartford County has been without an executive, executive director for several months. Recently, their primary veterinarian resigned due to unnecessary killing of an animal, despite her disagreement, which she expressed to the board and the staff. While HSHC is operating without a director, there are understandable stresses on shelter operations, but there is also great concern that more animals will be killed unnecessarily due to this transitional period. For public peace of mind and transparency, I ask that the council to request, as has been done before in the past, monthly live release rates from the board or their designated agent, and that those numbers be shared with the public. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 16, Business from Council Members. Mr. Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief this evening, because I know we have Mako starting, and I just kind of want to go over some of the classes I think are pertinent to us and our state that, you know, will be attending. So, State Energy, Landscape, Adapting, Leave Programs, Standards, Electrification, Renewables, and Emerging Tech, Boosting Local Economies Through Tourism, Opioid Dollars Making a Difference, Solving a Safer Schools, Reparations Considerations for Maryland, State of Maryland Economy, The Blueprint Three Years Later, Maryland Department of Transportation, Large County Coalition, Evolving Needs of Incarcerated Individuals in Detention Centers, Navigating Federal and State Budget Shifts, and Data Centers, The Growing Footprint. So, those are some of the classes myself and my colleagues will participate in and learn more about so we can make decisions here.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. So, on December 4th, I attended the grand opening ribbon cutting of Flagship Premium Cinemas in Churchville. It's old AMC Theater. It's phenomenal. They reconfigured the whole place. There's two large movie theaters with 100 seats. They all have reclining loungers that are all heated, and then two, a couple smaller theaters. So, place looks great. They, they spent over a million dollars fixing it all up. Prices are $11, so relatively inexpensive, and if you go on Tuesday, it's $7. So, if you haven't been to a movies in a while, looks like that's great. Also, attended and participated in the Bel Air Parade with the Society of Italian American Men. So, we blow snow every year. The kids love it. We're waving, greeting people, having a blast. It's probably my favorite parade. Myself and Council President, we walked out front, so I certainly do enjoy that, and looking forward to next year. I wish that parade lasted a while longer, but. And then finally, oh, actually, I also did a grand opening for Jacob of Tuta Paella in Havertie Grace. The chef there was a chef at Scotto's in Bel Air for about 18 years, and then he also traveled to Spain quite frequently and learned how to cook real paella. So, they have some real Spanish food there, they have tapas, but they also have Italian food. So, if you haven't eaten anywhere and you haven't tried it out, I saw them making the paella, and it looked amazing, and had a little bit, so look forward to going back. And then final, on a final note, Addie Dean was 2024 NCAA Junior American, All-American from Hartford Community College for Lacrosse, and we, my office presented her with a citation. So, that's it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano and Mr. Riley.
Yeah, sorry for my absence last week, but I was out of town on personal business. However, I did get a chance to go to a court of honor ceremony for an Eagle Scout, Samuel Price, Troop 265, a Madonna. Congratulations to him. My heart and prayers go out to my colleague, Councilwoman Jessica Boyle Sodles, her cousin, as everyone might know, Patrick Boyle surfaces were today, and I also will be heading down to Mako this week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley and Mr. Bennett.
Hello, good evening. It's been a busy week. I attended the Hartford County delegation send-off reception at the Lyrdendrum, which was really nice. And I continue to speak with our delegation members in hopes that they will support us in raising the cap on impact fees, that we can close that gap that exists between what we charge and what it costs in school construction projects. I also was in the Holly Jolly Parade in Havertie Grace, which was a lot of fun. I always enjoy that parade. It's so fun to see the community, although most people were yelling out my wife's name, not my name. I guess that's the power of being a Parks and Rec dance teacher, but they, they love Abby in the parade. I also met with the county treasurer, Mr. Sandless, who was just here earlier this evening. We talked earlier this week about just some of our expectations budgetarily going into the next year, what he's projecting and what his, his thought processes are right now, and it's a really productive conversation. He also shared with me some of the practices and economic conditions in other counties to give me a frame of reference as we go to Mako and are having conversations with other local elected officials from other counties. Abingdon Fire Company is going to be hosting Breakfast with Sienna this Sunday from 7:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. That's a very fun opportunity for people, and I also wanted to share that there will be no Abingdon cab meetings for our district this month. So, with that, that's everything I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And I don't have anything this evening, but I am going to express my condolences as well to Ms. Sodles and her family. Did attend the viewing yesterday, and I mean, just a massive, massive crowd. So, with that, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.